Community Council, the board will be going to roll call.
Commencing roll call now. Vice Chair Blair Whitney. Councilmember Juan Carlos Prado.
Here.
Councilmember Everado Rodriguez. Councilmember Nikette Cersei. Councilmember Kathleen Dally. Councilmember George Salmon. Councilmember Kelly Parisi. Councilmember Mariela Peralta. Chair Brooks Esser.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two, public comment. Being within speaker for two minutes of meeting topic not on the agenda. Please note that the council is not discussing action on items not on your agenda. During the room, please allow a speaker to present the clerk, those of you on the team, and use the raise to indicate. Do you have any public comments?
No public comment. Back to you, Chair.
Agenda item number three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Samantail County Libraries Annual Report. That presentation will be made by Carmen Latona Adams, who's the Branch Manager of the North Fair Oaks Library. Hello, Captain.
Hello, everyone. So, good evening, Community Council, Chair, Professor, and members of the Community Council. My name is Carmen Latona Adams, and I'm the Branch Manager for the North Fair Oaks Library. I'm pleased to present the library's annual report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty. Go to the next one. Each of our thirteen libraries is unique but also part of a larger family of transformative experiences in a single mission, to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and an environment. First established at the County Free Library in two twelve, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in nineteen ninety-nine, covering about three hundred and fifty-one square miles, our service areas comprise of our eleven member cities and unincorporated areas of the county such as the San Mateo County Libraries is uniquely positioned to see the broader county service area while at the same time understanding each community that we serve. The unique diversity and complexity of those we serve inspire and drive our services. Our staff's diversity mirrors the communities we serve, helping us incorporate the wisdom of varied lived experiences to better offer inclusive resources, meaningful services, and engaging events. Our goal is to reflect our communities by providing valuable times, space, and tools they need to feel represented and ready to explore. And Mateo County Libraries provides unmatched services to our community, and we are consistently ranked as one of the best libraries in the nation. Feedback from the community influences our work and strengthens our resolve to provide enlightening, exciting, and essential services. Samateo County Libraries continues to be a high-performing organization. Some standout statistics include our one point five million library visits, which is a fifty-six percent increase over last year, two point three million items circulated, which is six percent more items checked out, and our over two hundred and forty-five thousand program and event attendees, which is a hundred and twenty-six increase, a hundred and twenty-six percent increase over the last year. More people are participating in our programs, visiting our locations, and checking out our eclectic collection of materials. Here are a few highlights. This year, we saw an impressive four point three million Wi-Fi sessions, served over forty thousand nourishing meals, and checked out laptops over twenty-eight thousand tenants. The following chart summarized totals for North Fair Oaks Library through year end. For key library services, library visitor data prior to the library's transfer to San Mateo County Libraries on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, was provided by Redwood City Public Library. Compared to San Mateo County Libraries as a whole, North Fair Oaks has seen significantly higher increases from prior fiscal year in both library visitors and program attendance, with visitors more than doubling and program attendance nearly quintupling. Our incredible community continues to re-energize us. Many of our county met with gratitude and celebration. I'm excited to share a few of our significant achievements featured in this report. This March, we celebrated the first anniversary of our expanded seven days a week service for a total of over thirty-six thousand service hours. Expanded evening and weekend hours also provided more in-person opportunities for discovery and support through access to the latest technology, programming, and school and job resources that meet many needs and interests. Additional hours are critical in expanding equitable access to people who work multiple jobs and have non-traditional schedules or attendance. And our brand-new Maker Mobile hit the road this summer, taking maker activities and tech to new horizons. The Maker Mobile is a zero-emission custom-built vehicle that delivers high-impact maker programs beyond our libraries. Having this vehicle means we can take state-of-the-art tech to more people in more places. Residents who may have never experienced technology like 3D printing and laser cutting can now do so thanks to this initiative. And that is the Maker Mobile making its debut by Community Connect Charter. Power Up Afternoons offers K through twelve students opportunities to connect and grow with after-school experiences. These discovery and learned field afternoons have strengthened our connections with local students and families. Power Up Afternoons has reached thousands of kids. Participants enjoyed two thousand two hundred and forty-two hours of programming in which creativity and learning were encouraged. We did survey those participants, and ninety-seven percent said they enjoyed their library experiences. And then finally, the Big Lifting Stars Program, which was created to prevent the loss of learning that can happen over summer break, continues to impact the lives of young residents and their families. Through the generous support of County Measure K Funds, the program served nine hundred and sixty students this year and has shown strong positive academic gains in all literacy and math across participating school districts. And the North Fair Oaks Library is one of three libraries that benefited from the Adventure Parks Pass Grant through Parks, California. Families from North, from North Fair Oaks, as well as East Palo Alto and Coastside Communities, joined us on field trips to three state and county, actually seven state and county parks this summer and fall. Hollister Hills SVRA, Jack London State Historic Park, the California State Railroad Museum, Samuel P. Taylor, as well as Wonder Lake Park and the Fitzjoe Marine Reserve, which is that bright sunshine over there in the far right corner. And the North Fair Oaks Library partnered with Casa Circo Lo Preste de la for the Jack London State Historic Park trip, which is that top one, and those are the remains of Jack London's property, being Glen Ellen. So they got to tour the remains of the Wolf House, as well as Beauty Ranch, which was the home where Jack London ultimately passed away. And the bright shining face you see in the corner at Fitzjoe is Adriana from the San Mateo County Preps Foundation. She came with us and helped to translate, which was very, very helpful. The North Fair Oaks Library was also the lucky recipient of the Lunch at the Libraries grant, which we actually get every year, but this particular year, we were allowed to do two field trips, one to Pie Ranch, another to Harley Farms Ranch, both in Pescadero. The children from Casa Circo Lo attended this field trip, and for many of these children, this was their first time to the coast side and the first time away from their parents. So it was quite fun. And here at Pie Ranch, they're learning about food mills. After all of these field trips over the summer, many docents emailed me later to say that the kids of North Fair Oaks were one of the most polite and engaged tour groups they had ever seen all year, and they loved their thirst for knowledge. Language is power, and being able to read in your preferred language is invaluable. Through the addition of twenty-nine thousand world language items, our communities now have more opportunities to experience linguistic diversity than ever before. Chinese, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Tagalog, and Spanish voices are now more representative. It's part of our commitment to provide equitable access to materials for all, ensuring community members will seem and supported. Supplies like pads and tampons are also unnecessary, as necessary as toilet paper and soap, and yet they are not readily available, accessible, or affordable. We believe that physical needs shouldn't keep anyone from using our libraries, so we decided to take action. By offering free menstrual products in all our libraries, anyone in need can get these necessary resources and continue using our services. This year, we launched mental health first aid training to continue supporting our communities. Mental health first aid is an initiative making training, is an initiative making training available to empower community members to respond and provide initial help and support to someone experiencing a mental health crisis. The training has given our public service staff additional expertise to help someone in need. In collaboration with several partner agencies, we are now providing direct service to patrons inside our libraries. They're better connecting residents to unemployment assistance, low-income housing eligibility, food assistance, and other state. We joyfully welcome the return of in-person volunteers this year. Enthusiastic volunteers, friends of the library and foundation members have generously devoted thousands of hours of their time. Their hours of service are essential to advancing important equity goals, whether signing up to tutor an adult literacy learner or contributing language skills and supporting staff with bilingual spoke. And our library champions are our most important organizational asset. This year, we increased library positions and celebrated the return of local teen interns to our libraries for the first time since twenty seventeen. And I'd like to close my presentation with a short heartwarming video that highlights our library champions and the incredible services they provide.
San Mateo County Libraries is located in the Bay Area. We have thirteen branches and cover three hundred and fifty-one square miles. We do everything from offering storytimes to young children. We engage with teens with a lot of programming, such as craft programs or college career and career courses.
We offer so many resources, more than just books. We offer free meals to families. We offer tech tutor help. We also offer resource guidance for families who are having difficulty navigating how to get free food.
We have 3D printers, we have laser cutters, we have podcasting equipment, and we have our VR systems, and we also have a memory lab where our patrons can save memories. Patrons are learning new skills, they're learning with each other, and at the same time, they're creating a caring and inclusive community.
We try really hard to make sure that we see needs that are in the community and then try to meet those needs, whether that is just helping somebody learn how to access their email or set up an email, to helping them find that perfect book for their kid who is not so stoked about reading. Everyone has a talent here.
We have a wide range of physical and digital materials. We have what we call our library of things, and that includes things like bikes and sewing machines, hotspots, laptops, Chromebooks. We have energy kits. We even loan ukuleles for you to play.
Our libraries are the center of our communities, right? They're a place where people come to do research, to study, to read books to their kids, and San Mateo County Libraries does an excellent job in figuring out how we can impact all of our communities within San Mateo County and how we can best utilize the resources that we have to support them, and all at no cost. It's, it's a great feeling.
So I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to showcase some of our incredible accomplishments and your ongoing support of the North Fair Oaks Library. In addition, I'd like to recognize and thank the library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, county staff and council for your ongoing support, particularly Supervisor Warren Slocum, and Deputy County Executive Justin Mates for their work on the Library JPA and Operations Committee. So I'm happy to answer any questions you need.
Any questions from council members or Carmen? Please go ahead.
So, Bravo. This was, I wanted to start talking, but I, I didn't know if that was appropriate or not. It is both a comment, and then I promise I have a question. Great work. I, we were talking before about how much I attended the library and knew about the ukuleles and all the fun that I watched a librarian teach an elderly resident how to use an iPhone the other day for an hour. She couldn't help me figure out how to print because she was wrapped up, and that felt like she was doing God's work. And so, this is amazing and such a community service, and while I so appreciate this presentation, I'm curious what you need and what the ask is. Like, you're doing great work, and these are great statistics that show that. So my question really is more of an ask to you is, what do you need from us? We're the Community Council. We are here to promote community service and programs in our community, and, and the library is for sure an invaluable piece of that. What can we do for you? You've just told us how great all of these things you're doing, but I want to know how we can be in service to you.
Yeah. You know, I think, I think that's the big question that has, you know, been over the years, right? Like what, what the North Fair Oaks Library needs. This is a, you know, a, a community that needs a lot, and as you know, our library is small. So I feel like that's always been on the mind of various library patrons. I'm sure the council itself. You know, I don't, I'm not formally asking for any sort of support, but I, I think that's always been sort of the underlying message of, you know, how we can continue to grow and improve library services in this community, and our building is small, but our staff are mighty, and so our, our goal has always been for these last three, two, three years since we've transitioned to just do library services beyond the buildings, and that's part of the reason why we, you know, pursue the Adventure Park Pass Grant, the Lunch at the Libraries grant, because we know that the kids are out there, and while our library is small, our staff are large enough, you know, we have enough staff to be able to go out and bring the library outside. So, I almost want to flip your question and say like, what, what does the, the community want from its library, and how can we make it reflect their, their true needs?
Yeah, I mean, it's funny. I walked over here from my home, and I saw the benches that got installed on Eighth Avenue. If anyone hasn't seen them yet, the solar powered, and I was like, how soon is it before these USB ports are like stealing stations like they are at airports? And they steal the solar panels off of this, and how much should we spend on this? And when you go to a library, there are courting stations, you could rent a laptop. I, I was thinking, because I mostly go to the library almost every day, and anyways, I was just thinking about, but what a better use of resources than, the bench is great. Everyone needs a place to sit, but this sun-powered solar station is going to be like cybercrime in like a hot second. They just got installed. I'm just waiting for it. I'll read it in the bladder, but I appreciate you throwing the question back, and I think that's something we should consider, because you are doing great work.
Kathleen, go ahead.
I want to second the great work. I, I remember the presentation last year, and you guys are just continuing to do awesome things. My goal somehow is going to continue to bug whoever we need to, to get you that space that you deserve. You deserve a bigger space. It needs to be prominent, a prominent part of North Fair Oaks. I had a little boy at school today ask me how much it costs to go to the library. So we know that there's still a lot of people out there that don't know about the libraries and don't know the power of the library, so it, it would just be super important, and it made me think of something. And I don't know where the building is, but I keep looking at buildings that are for sale or for rent or whatever in our area. There's a group in Redwood City that's looking for a space for artists. And I'm wondering if we couldn't find a way to combine both the art center that they're looking for and a library in one of these big buildings or one of these huge lots that are a waste and could be of good service. So I'm keeping my eye out, looking for somewhere for that space for, for at least for the library to happen. But it did make me think of these art centers that Redwood City is trying to put in.
But also Kathleen, as part of these, you know, the county has great ability to require things of developments.
That's.
And there with this new housing requirement, there is a requirement for low-income affordable housing. Why is there not subsequent library space? And I, I would want to look to see where they're already developing things and how we can like.
Get on the first floor of any one of these buildings. Yeah, I'd agree. So.
Questions? Blair, go ahead.
The San Mateo County Library System is a district that kind of overlaps the county, I think. I, I'm totally into libraries, and I researched it a little bit, but I don't totally understand it. Do they get funded directly from like an increment of property taxes going to them? And it doesn't have to go out of the county budget?
Property tax.
Okay, so I thought that. And the membership of the governing board is like some members of the Board of Supervisors, some city people from each of the communities served, probably in at-large position and stuff. Is there like a, a capital plan? Because I, Half Moon Bay is like, Atherton is really, really pretty, but I like Half Moon Bay better.
Yeah. I used to work there, too.
And, and to, to get in the pipeline, to get a truly great library structure, you need to plant the seed and then nurture it and let it grow and get it in that capital plan and then do some community fundraising. Is there anything in the pipeline already?
I, I wouldn't know.
Okay, that, that's a governing board issue for.
That would probably be a question for Supervisor Slocum.
Is he, is he a county representative to the, one of the members of the board?
Yes.
Okay. He's turned out, I think, in.
Yes.
Eleven months or something.
You might be interested in looking at what the East Palo Alto Library is doing.
They're on the ground floor of that older building, and I saw this new EPA center. Is that where they're going to move to? It's a beautiful new building. Once again, the community had this synergy, and they thought ahead. And then like, the library is going to be a central piece of this new hub that's going.
Funded by Meta Zuckerberg.
No, no, actually, a lot of these public works projects benefit from some last-minute donor contributions for naming, but it's public works. You get in a capital budget, you plan for it, and you can buy money from your capital budget. The city might kick in from their capital budget. Yeah. I, I worked on the San Jose Main Library, and they got some, a little bit of money at the end from Adobe and stuff, but it was the California State University System Capital Budget and the City of San Jose Capital Budget that built the Martin Luther King Joint Main Library. And it was like a, a pretty epic project, like five years, but it turned out beautifully. So I'm asking all these questions because I, I share your vision that we could have something great. But it's up to someone, something maybe us or others to champion it to the, you know, plant the seed and nurture it. Have a question you can answer. I can't think of it, except I, I, I think it's a great program, and have you done the Fix It Clinic?
I think you've done one, and I think they have a plan to do one. No, they did one. I think.
I went to Redwood City last weekend, and they had a great fix-it clinic.
Yes.
And I think I missed the one at, at North Fair Oaks, but that, I just want to bring that up because that's the county office of sustainability pushing that, and rather than putting stuff in the dumpster all the time, just because it's like working wonky, you can bring that old toaster. In my case, it was like an Ionic Breeze air cleaner from two thousand and five, and I'm like, gonna throw it in the dumpster, but let's just try. And there was a volunteer. We took the whole thing apart. We found one wire that was loose. He showed me how to solder it, and I went home like happy, like a little kid, like I did something. And it was, it was popular. There were like twenty, thirty people going in and out. It was like a four-hour window, and there was like a ton of things. Anyone know about Tesla wall chargers, you know, and some volunteers like, let me take a stab at it. It was like really cool. And there's like a certain synergy where all these programs come together. The library is like a crossroads for that. It's a community activation space. Once again, I didn't really come up with a question for you to answer. Thanks. Any other questions for Carmen Nikette?
Had a, one more library rat and volunteer intern way back in the day. I think it's been amazing and really enjoyed the library experiences, so echoing all that again. One question I always had and wanted to see if you've been considered is, given that this is a little bit of a smaller space, I know you probably can't do some of the same activities as the other facilities. With the proximity, is there a possibility for maybe some sort of like shuttle service or coordination between the library locations to give more access to activities, to people, to be able to do things? And, you know, maybe if there's a program in the downtown library or in Atherton, local people from here can get out there much more easily through a back-and-forth type system.
Yeah, that's something that we experimented with for just a handful of programs over the summer. And it was kind of hit or miss. I mean, it's something that we've tried. We haven't tried that with downtown Redwood City Public Library, that we do collaborate a lot together. And I would say the, the biggest transportation adventure we had was really to connect to these parks.
Yeah, no, and, and that was actually wonderful and great. I was thinking something a little bit more small scale, like on a day-to-day for like after-school activities or being able to get more experience. Like, I love the Maker Mobile idea. It's great. I also know like Atherton has a maker station in there, but maybe kids from this community have a trouble getting over there or something like that. Except there was like a service that we could provide to the library, that's one thing. Just a thought. And then had another question on just the percentages. It looks like, you know, the, this, we have a lot of attendees and visitors at the North Fair Oaks, but the circulation numbers looked a little bit low. Is that just because the size of the collection is low, or is there something else, a reason why items aren't circulated as much as in the other?
It could be, I think it's a number of factors. My own personal thoughts are it, it's a small collection, and so we don't have, we have what's called a floating collection. So whatever gets returned here stays here until it gets checked out, and it might go somewhere else. So sometimes a child will come and look for a book. It's not here. So they might go to a different library. But I think another reason was something that you spoke to earlier is that a lot of children still have that fear or that doubt of, no, I can't take a library book home because I might have to pay for it, or what if it gets lost? That's something that we are still, when we do our school outreach is every week, have to remind kids like, it's okay if it gets lost. We just want you to take it home and practice reading. I, I think that's been the hardest thing. And so the, the circulation numbers have sort of steadily trickled. It's just not a drastic one, like the programming ones. And what we find is a lot of the people are using the library staff as a resource rather than the books, the materials as a resource. So they come in and they look for us to help us with their ESL help, citizenship. Whenever we do maker activities, we're doing an open sewing class right now as I speak. So it's interesting to see that, and I've worked at various libraries. And this is probably unique compared to all the other ones, that the people who come to this library are coming for us as opposed to the things that we carry.
Well, that explains why I couldn't find a parking when I got here, but. Does that mean there's maybe a thought to be more service-oriented, so you'll reduce the collection a bit? Use the like virtual checkout or provide like maybe more digital experiences? And then again, maybe then we don't need a huge space for the books that can be converted to more activities or service type things.
I mean, I think that's always a thought. Our collection is very small compared to other branches. They probably have the smallest. It, it doesn't really take up that much of a footprint in the library itself because it's just the walls, right? But I, I do feel like little by little, children are coming in to look for the books. It's just when it's going to, I think it's going to take a long time to get to the point for a lot of those children to get to the level where, for example, Foster City is the highest-circling library of all the libraries, or number thirty-one else. I think it's going to take years to get that, but Foster City is also five times bigger. And so I, I think part of it is partly likely because of the size.
And is there still the program for having like a children's account or library card that there's no due date or there's the no fees and things like that? Okay.
We partnered with Redwood City Public Library to do the Empower Card. We started this two years ago, and We partnered with Redwood City Public Library to do the Empower Card. We started this two years ago and. Um, all of the the public schools in Redwood City, um, all the children have Empower Card, so. Those children can use all the re resources available of both the county and the city library and check out books and there's no fee.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carmen?
Yeah, good chair. Um, we we've we've come a long way. Um, I, you know, forty years ago when I used to uh. Go to Garfield School and live in this community as a child, there was a room in this building no bigger than twelve by twelve and that was the library. That's where it all started. This was forty years ago. So. I think it's time to keep progressing, keep moving, and I agree with Kathleen. I think it's time to, we, you know, invest. And and future children and and invest in our own community. Um, and as our community grows and the business community grows, we need to make sure that everything else is growing along.
Um, thank you, Juan. Because um, I I know you have way tons more experience. I just started substitute teaching. Um, and I know you've been doing it for a while and I will tell you that kids will pick up a computer and claim that they're reading. But they're really reading when they have a physical book in their hands and they are reading that way and only that way. And I I'm teaching an after school reading program. I'm trying to get. Anything from third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh graders to pick up the book. No, you know, get my Chromebook out. I read on my Chromebook. No, you don't. You need to flip the page. We need to have a conversation about the book. It's not on computers. And I know The Guardian, I don't know if everyone, anyone reads it. I haven't read it yet, but. There's research coming out that says kids are learning better by on paper than they ever will on computer. And that might not be for everyone, but the power of books is the reason why we need a better library for North Fair Oaks. The power of books.
Any other questions for Carmen? Talk a little bit Carmen about um. Programs for pre K, pre third grade children, that kind of thing that are going on at the library.
Yeah, um, we have been doing the Lena program for the last year or so and Lena is for. It's in for two, about three years and it's meant to start um language learning. For the children in that age group and it's it's a parent child engagement program. So the parent and the child come together and the child has a. A recording device that doesn't record. What is being said, but it counts the number of words that are being exchanged between the child and the parent. And then every week the parent and child come in, it's sort of like a class. This is how many, this was your target uh. Amount of words being um exchanged with your child. This is how you met it. This is the growth and things like that. So we we've been doing that for the past year um. With with great success. We then with Gus's seat pillow to do it the first year. Um, now we've been doing it at the library because we're getting more people coming to the library. So it's nice. Um, we continue to do regular story times and our regular story times are bilingual. And it's not just us reading to the children, it's us teaching the caregivers, the parents. You know, how to how to read to your kid, how to sing to your kid. Um. This year, we also heavily are investing in a program called Raising a Reader and that means that our library staff are going to preschools. Um, and connecting with the preschool staff on how to engage the children to read. And actively participate in reading with their parents. Part of raising a reader is having family literacy events. And so we've been partnering with these preschools to come and do big events at our library so we can continue going um for literacy.
That's terrific. Lena bilingual program as well.
It starts to begin February fifteenth.
Any other questions for uh for Carmen? Well, thank you so much. Your presentation, you're doing terrific work over there. Please reach out to us if there's anything you can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number four, boards and commissions, conflict of interest ethics, Brown Act Refresher Training. That's gonna be covered by uh. We have a public comment, excuse me. I apologize.
I'd like to call Marcia Cohen. I have two minutes.
Uh, good evening, Chair and Council members. My name is Marcia Cohen and I'm a resident of North Fair Oaks. Um, I was one of several tide pool tour guides with the North Durocks Library Group. They came on a field trip to Fitzgerald Marine Reserve in Moss Beach on December ninth. For those who don't know, if you don't know about the Friends of Fitzgerald, uh, here's a few details. We're a nonprofit group of volunteers founded in nineteen eighty-five. Our mission is to inspire the preservation of the unique intertidal habitat at Fitzgerald through education and the support of research. We do this by offering guided tours which are arranged through the Samatelle County Parks Department. As the reserve is county park. Our volunteers lead an average of twenty-three hundred students on tours of the tide pools during the school year. And we contribute an average of four thousand volunteer hours for all our activities in fulfilling our mission. Over time, we've noticed a decline in the number of public schools coming to Fitzgerald for field trips. We were so glad to see the North Fair Oaks Library on our tour schedule as they are not part of our usual outreach effort. One of the biggest challenges that prevents many public schools from coming to our tide pools is transportation. I was amazed how creative and persistent Carmen and her staff were in obtaining funds for transportation to Fitzgerald. Our team has some funds. Um, and we provide uh uh bus grants. Uh, and I mentioned this to Carmen to keep in mind for their next field trip to Fitzgerald. All our Fitzgerald volunteers on the tour with the North Fair Oaks Library Group had a great time. And we hope they remember a little about the amazing animals that live in these tide pools and we look forward to working with Carmen and her staff. When they make another trip to Fitzgerald and hope that they can make it a regular activity.
Thank you for your comment, Marcia. Okay, now agenda item number four. Tim. Conflict of interest ethics and Brown Act Refresher Training for you.
It's the highlight of the year, the Brown Act.
Great. Um, good evening, all. Uh, my name is Tim Fox. I'm a lead deputy county attorney in the county attorney's office. And I've been asked to do a training tonight um on the Brown Act. And uh some other public interest um laws that govern the activities of the North Oaks Community Council. Relating to conflicts of interest. First of all, let me thank you for choosing. Uh, public service, um especially those of you that are new or relatively new. Thank you for doing this work. I hope that you find it as. Rewarding and find its inconveniences as minor as I have uh in my choice in public service. Um. On the subject of inconvenience as a public ser- public service, I I I want to talk about the Brown Act. Um, it is a topic of frequent conversation in administering county and other public programs. Um, and I think it's a source of great confusion. People are often aware of this law. Um, but they also uh don't don't frequently understand it as deeply as. Uh, as is necessary in order to ensure that the public's business is conducted um openly and with transparency. So. The point of tonight's training is actually just to give you a set of vocabulary. And some basic understanding about the concepts. You don't need to have all of your questions answered tonight. I will leave. Time at the end for you to ask questions if you have them, but I am available to you at any time if you have questions about parliamentary procedure or um how to administer. Um, your meetings properly to ensure uh public transparency. Probably I need to be on the screen that advances. There we go. Okay, so what is the Brown Act? It is probably the only California law that people tend to know by name. They might know a handful of uh uh letters and numbers, but the Brown Act, people know by name. It's been our law since nineteen fifty-three, so a very long time. And the intent of the law is that all actions by public boards, commissions and councils should be taken openly and that their deliberation should be in public. The reason the Brown Act was enacted in nineteen fifty-three and the reason why it has been so frequently amended by the legislature. Since that time is that what predated it was a habit on the part of public officials to conduct business literally behind closed doors. It was the habit uh of a number of city councils up and down the state to have a meeting before the meeting. Where the people in power would decide how it was all gonna go down and they would script out what it was they were going to say to the public. And then when they would come out to the public meeting room, what occurred was basically a show for the public's benefit and not really a sincere discussion. Of uh policy or concerns. So the Brown Act was adopted by the legislature as a way to ensure that the messiness. Of the discussion about public policy should happen in front of the people who are being served by it. So the public's business is the public's business and the public has a right to see what its officials say and do in furtherance of their interests. Um, but there's also a desire to balance that with the need occasionally to conduct some proceedings. Um, in a way that respects people's privacy and in some cases confidentiality. The work of the North Oaks Community Council doesn't often have to rely upon those provisions of the Brown Act, but in case you're interested. The city council, the Board of Supervisors, many other uh institutions will occasionally hold closed sessions. Um, which are behind closed doors. Those aren't illegal. They are uh limited, but they um they are a tool that's available in unique circumstances where. Um, they're appropriate to be uh relied upon. In general, the Brown Act presumes that there will be public access to all of the proceedings. Um, the possibility for a closed session, as I said, is very limited and it's uh. Confined to certain topic areas only. So even if you have a really, really good reason to have a closed session. If it doesn't meet one of the listed statutory bases for a closed session, it's gonna have to be an open session. So the presumption is all meetings occur in open session. Uh, and the exceptions are very few. And those exceptions, even when they apply, have to be construed narrowly. Uh, in order to maximize uh public visibility of uh public meetings. And in case you wanted to pull up the law, I gave you the citation uh these days. It used to be that the law was hard to find. You had to go to a law library to find it. Uh, but now you can simply Google these terms and you'll find the text of the law. The three main rules provided by the Brown Act are, one, that you have to give notice to the public before any meeting. Describing when the meeting will occur, where it will occur, and most importantly, what the meeting is for. And that takes the form usually of a posted agenda, which is a list of the topics that will be discussed by the body at the meeting. Secondly, the Brown Act requires that there must be an opportunity for public participation during the meeting. And that usually takes two forms. One is an invitation for general public comment, usually at the beginning of the meeting. You ask the public if they have anything they would like the council to know about what's going on in the community. And then secondly, as most agencies administer their own rules and as the council does. Each agenda item includes an opportunity for a member of the public to comment on that particular item. Now, there are some city councils on the peninsula that say that all comment has to occur during the public comment period. So. Even if you're commenting on an item on the agenda, those city councils have a practice of requiring you to give your comment at the very beginning of the meeting. Um, most county agencies do what I've just described a moment ago where there's general public comment for matters not appearing on the agenda. Then each subsequent agenda item impliedly includes an invitation to the public to get up and address the council about that particular agenda. And then the third thing that's provided are the exceptions to the public access and participation rules. We talked about the exception to the public access rule. In the form of closed session, which, as I said, is very narrow. And then there are limitations on the ability of the public to participate in the meetings. You're not allowed to speak to the council out of order. You have to comply with certain parliamentary procedures. You can't just shout at people from the audience. These are rules that can be enforced in order to maintain the dignity and um productivity of the meeting. So I've been talking about meetings. What do I mean about a meeting? What what is meant by a meeting in the Brown Act? Well, there's the obvious answer. A meeting is something like what we're doing right now. It is a notice, an agendized meeting in a public building. It is a planned time for a quorum of members of the council to gather together in a publicly owned room. Accessible to the public and um. The topics for which have been listed on a posted agenda. But the Brown Act also describes a meeting as being any gathering by a majority of the members. In a place to hear, discuss, or deliberate on a matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. Now, this is where we start talking about some of the inconveniences of the Brown Act. Because essentially, the things that might have been allowed to you in your capacity potentially as a member of a nonprofit board, for example. To go on a board retreat, maybe outside the jurisdiction. To meet up at a restaurant and have a meal together and discuss business. To gather together for a Christmas party or a holiday party and have a discussion at that time. All of those things that are very common in the private sector and in the management of private sector boards are defined as meetings under the Brown Act and they are forbidden. They must qualify as the first thing that I discussed, which is a noticed and agendized public meeting. So if you are all going to meet up at a coffee shop, you need to post an agenda and you need to tell the public seventy-two hours in advance that you're planning to do this. In addition, meeting includes any use of a technological artifice to develop a collective concurrence as to a matter. Within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. What does that mean? It means, again, unlike maybe what might have been allowed on another board to which you might have previously belonged. A nonprofit board, a PTA, something of that like. You can't just hold a vote by email. You can't have a discussion on a social media platform. You can't use technology in the ways that the private sector regularly uses technology to hold productive and um open discussions. Rather, you have to comply with the Brown Act, which has stricter uh requirements about how you go about holding a meeting. So you can't have a chain email where you hit reply all and tell people how it is that you plan to vote. If you do that, you have held a meeting. Didn't feel like a meeting, but the Brown Act says that it was. And because there wasn't any posted agenda or opportunity for public comment, it is now a meeting that violates the law. So in general, the Brown Act places limitations on your ability to talk to each other. Outside of this room or another room specified as your official meeting place. So everything that I've just described means that meeting includes regular meetings, special meetings, study sessions, as are held pretty frequently by this. Uh, council, uh board retreats and workshops. It also includes more informal gatherings like lunches and social gatherings. It includes telephone calls and chain emails. It includes social media threads and bulletin boards. It includes Nextdoor. It includes using intermediaries to carry messages to each other in advance of the meeting. And it also includes all of those things, even if you're not necessarily holding a vote. Even if you're just discussing things preliminarily and finding out what the interests of your fellow council members may be. It is not illegal to find out what your fellow council members think. You're supposed to do it here and now in a posted meeting where the rest of the public gets to hear what is said. What is not a meeting, though? So I've told you about the inconveniences, but it's not all bad news. The good news is the Brown Act says that you can meet with your constituents. You can meet with your community. You can meet with. Every member of the North Fair Oaks community who is not a member of the North Fair Oaks Council. You're free to meet with them and you can meet with them in a coffee shop. You can meet with them in a social gathering. You can talk to them on social media. So you are allowed to do all of the things that I just forbade you to do as long as you are doing them, people who aren't fellow council members. You can also, even as a group, attend a conference. Um, as long as you don't do something called caucusing. Where you gather together and sit together as a group and have a conversation about the thing you all have in common, which is North Fair Oaks. You can all attend a meeting of another public entity. All of you could collectively go to a Board of Supervisors meeting. And that would not be an illegal meeting, even though a majority of you might be in attendance. You could attend a purely social or ceremonial gathering, but again, you could not gather together as a group and clump in a corner and talk about. Common uh interests and concerns that are within your subject matter jurisdiction. You could give testimony to a grand jury. I hope that never becomes necessary, but that would not be a meeting uh within the meaning of the Brown Act. And you can attend a meeting of a standing committee of the county or a standing committee of the North Fair Oaks Council. If you uh were to form one, as long as a mem- as the members creating a quorum are there only to observe and do not speak. If you are presented with the opportunity to attend a meeting of another committee or subcommittee of the North Fair Oaks Council, please talk to me in advance and I'll let you know how those rules might might apply. So I've been talking about a majority of you. Um, the word majority and quorum are used interchangeably in the Brown Act because they mean the same thing. The Brown Act speaks about a majority of the membership and that is the number. and that is the number required to be present in order to transact business legally. It's usually a majority of the membership of the council. And we'll talk about the troubling question of what to do when you're allowed to take action with less than a quorum, which actually isn't the case with regard to your bylaws. So it's really more an intellectual exercise. But we do occasionally struggle with this problem of, what happens if three or four people are gathered together, but it would require five to really pass any item? Is it still okay for them to talk? But I'll tell you right now, your magic number is four. You can talk four amongst you, including yourself, without violating the Brown Act. It's when you add a fifth person that you violated the Brown Act. So because there are nine members of the North Fair Oaks Community Council, four of you can talk in advance of meetings, but you can't add a fifth. And what that means is, because we talked about using a technological artifice, so we're using intermediaries, none of you can add a fifth. So if four of you are working together on some project or initiative, and then one of you wants to talk to another council member, that fifth person ruins it for everybody else. Everybody has then engaged in a form of communication that violates the Brown Act because it is a non-public discussion involving a majority. Even if the discussion wasn't everybody all in the same room at the same time, it involved five people, and that's the thing the Brown Act is designed to prevent. But you can find a board buddy, a council buddy. We recommend this for people as they join new Brown Act agencies to have a member of the council that they go back to and talk to and get counsel with and navigate the process with. It's perfectly fine for you to talk to each other. It's not okay for a majority of you to talk together outside of this room. So, it's been a while since the North Fair Oaks Council has asked about establishing committees or subcommittees. But this is a sort of unique area of the law where, even if you create a subcommittee, the Brown Act will apply. And, this is perhaps a little counterintuitive, even if that subcommittee consists of less than a majority, the Brown Act will apply to that subcommittee. So if you form an official subcommittee and appoint members to meet together to talk about a matter of North Fair Oaks Council business, even if it's only two or three of you on that committee, you might say, "Well, Tim, didn't you just say only a majority?" Well, the Brown Act says that any body or subcommittee created by official action of the council also must comply with the Brown Act. So, subcommittees have to comply if they're created by formal action of the body, even if they consist of less than a quorum. A little counterintuitive, but the more time you spend thinking about it, the more you realize that if that wasn't the rule, there would be a giant loophole created in the Brown Act. And the legislature has outsmarted us a little bit. However, even the loophole has a loophole. A special type of subcommittee called an advisory committee composed solely of the members of the legislative body that are less than a quorum of the legislative body, if they are assigned to meet on a single topic and given a limited amount of time, and their only power is to report back to the main group, what is called in parliamentary procedure, an ad hoc advisory subcommittee, doesn't have to comply with the Brown Act. They can meet at a coffee shop. They could meet at a council member's house, and it would not violate the Brown Act to do so. So basically, if you are creating a subcommittee for the purpose of researching a particular complicated issue and then reporting back to open session with a recommendation for the entire board, ask me, and I will tell you the magic words to use when you create that subcommittee so that you have the flexibility to meet without having to post an agenda and invite the public. So please consult with staff and me on the appropriate measures based on what your intent is, because sometimes you want to create a subcommittee that will have public meetings. Other times, it's more flexible to say, "We just really need these two council members to hash it out between themselves and come up with a recommendation they both can support." So I've been talking a lot about the agenda and the importance of the agenda. The Brown Act requires that when you give notice of a public meeting, and of course, all meetings must be public under the Brown Act, that notice must include a brief summary of each item of business to be conducted. So agendas are in common use in parliamentary bodies of nonprofits and other organizations. But they have a special meaning to Brown Act bodies because it's not just the list of things and items of business that you want to get through during your meeting. It's also everything you told the public that you were going to be talking about that night so that they had the opportunity to come to the meeting and let their concerns be known. So, your options for posting something on an agenda are to specify whether the purpose of your meeting is to merely discuss the item or take action on the item. And the Brown Act says that if you're going to take action, you need to tell the public that, so they know. So they know that you're not just having a preliminary discussion of the item. For a regular meeting, that agenda must be posted at least 72 hours in advance of the regular meeting. And that is a deadline that staff has to administer and worry about at all times because if you miss that 72-hour deadline, you may need to cancel the meeting and reschedule it for another day. So even those recurring meetings that are established by the council as your regular meetings, 72 hours in advance, you have to set the agenda. And that's the work that the chair does with staff in order to make sure that you have enough items of business, not too many. Now, for special meetings, which are the ones that are called kind of out of the ordinary course, you can post the agenda 24 hours in advance. The council generally doesn't tend to post very many special meetings because it's an inconvenience to the members to only find out about the meeting 24 hours in advance. But, you know, I can say the Board of Supervisors and others will occasionally have to avail themselves of this rule in order to meet various deadlines. Once the agenda has been posted, generally speaking, you can't add new items to it, except under unique and rare circumstances, such as during emergencies, and those are hard to establish. So in general, once the agenda's been posted, if you have an idea about something you want to discuss, you're going to have to wait for the next meeting's agenda to discuss it. But it's okay to talk about asking that it be agendized in the meeting. So that's really the best course of action is to say, "When we're working on the agenda for the next meeting, can we please add an item to discuss this matter of interest?" In general, the description of the item that you're going to discuss is supposed to be about 20 words long. Too few. It can be fewer if that is all that's necessary. But what the legislature was trying to avoid was people just posting a word salad of things that the agency might want to discuss. And then, the public can't really understand what might actually be discussed that meeting. So the hallmark is basically 20 words or fewer. And you can't rely upon using the supplementary items posted on the website as the basis for your agenda. You can put the agenda there, but in general, like the description of the item to be discussed can't simply be in an attachment to the agenda. It has to be on the agenda itself in some form. So what are the rights of the public during the course of a public meeting conducted under the Brown Act? So the public has, as we've discussed, the right to receive advanced notice of the time, the place, and the topics of all the meetings. They have the right to have geographically approximate meetings, that is, the meetings have to occur within the jurisdiction. They have a right that the meetings be held in accessible locations with the availability of any necessary assistive devices. And we have a process for people asking for accommodation at public meetings if they need assistive devices to be able to participate. But for this reason, you could not hold a meeting in the second story of a historic building, for example, because that would not be accessible to everyone. Persons with disabilities would be unable to attend. The public has the right to record the meeting. This tends to be less of an issue in the Zoom meeting era, but once upon a time, you would have members of the public setting up their own video cameras and tripods and directing them at the dais to record the meeting. The public has to have the right to bring new issues to the board's attention during public comment. We certainly allow that. If anybody wanted to bring to the board's attention, to the council's attention, something that was happening in the community, they would be allowed to do so. They have the right to see the same agenda packet and supporting materials that you see. They do that generally now by clicking on the attachments on the website that's maintained by the County Executive's Office and the Office of Community Affairs. They have the right to comment on each item before the board deliberates on the item. That's during the public hearing. We have a provision of every agenda item that reminds the members that there will be public comment on every item. And the public has the right to hear your deliberations and to know your final actions. And most importantly, they have the right to know who voted which way. Which means that, in general, you can't hold secret ballots, even if you'd really like to, even if it would be less awkward for you to do that, or if you felt that it would be, it would improve the discussion for there to be a straw poll of some kind and people not to know how folks were going to vote. That's not allowed under the Brown Act. The public is supposed to know how you voted each time you vote. And typically, the way in which that, the form that that takes is that the chair or some other person on the body, such as a recording secretary or someone else, will announce what the vote was. And you have to actually say, "The item passed four to two", and then you specify which members voted which way. And that includes closed sessions. And when we say that the public has the right to comment, that has a very unique meaning because the First Amendment applies to all of the business that we conduct. The public has the right to comment, but that right is not unlimited. There are reasonable regulations of public comment that we are allowed to enforce. Generally, most Brown Act bodies will have a per-speaker time limit because otherwise, you could have people trying to filibuster the business of the council by speaking endlessly. So there is a time limit, and those time limits can be enforced if they are reasonable. Occasionally, there is a need to have a per-item speaker limit. So if you had a particularly contentious meeting where the room was filled with members of the public that wanted to comment, and you had to take action that night, you could in fact say, "We're going to receive public comment for 90 minutes, and then at the conclusion of 90 minutes, we will no longer accept any more speakers." You're allowed to do that. It's very rare, and most agencies make an effort to avoid ever having to do that because the obligation would be to make sure that you hadn't inadvertently caused only the speakers in favor of the item to speak first, and then, "Oh, you ran out of time when the speakers opposed to the item were given their opportunity to speak." So you have to administer it randomly to allow that you're getting proper mix of public commenters. And finally, you're not allowed to have any content-based limitations on public comment. Namely, a number of agencies feel a need to communicate to the public that if you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all. That is not consistent with the First Amendment. You're allowed to say not-nice things. It may be less effective than saying nice things, but you're not allowed to forbid the public from saying unkind things about you, about staff, about others in the community. They are allowed to say those unkind things, and it is generally impossible to stop them from doing so. However, however, we have encountered in recent days a social phenomenon of people making extremely outrageous comments in order to shock and dismay the public. Generally, if the public comment is allowed online, occasionally you'll have speakers that take advantage of their community and will say outrageous things. You are allowed to cut them off if they are speaking off-topic. And that is a very powerful tool, given the fact that a number of these commenters have a habit of using almost a script of things to say that are dismaying and outrageous. So if that becomes an issue, I can advise you about how best to cut off the comment and not prolong the agony. In general, when a person has spoken to you from the dais at public comment, or from the podium, I should say, the public isn't bound by the Brown Act the way that you are. So you have to confine yourself to matters on the agenda, but the public does not have to confine themselves. So if a member of the public gets up and says, "I want to talk about this issue important to me right now", they are allowed to talk. You have limitations on your ability to respond because the public would have the right to know, based on the posted agenda, whether or not the matter was going to be discussed by the council. And the public can say, "I want to talk about this tonight." Generally speaking, the only appropriate response is, "We have heard your concerns, and we will ask that this be agendized for a future meeting." So even though the public's allowed to say what's not on the agenda, say things about things that are not on the agenda, the board is forbidden to hear, discuss, or deliberate on items not appearing on the agenda. So the brief response that you are allowed to give in response to public comment is either to give information that a person speaking at the podium might not have, like where to find something or when something's going to occur. You're allowed to correct misinformation. You generally are allowed to refer the speaker to staff or any kind of necessary follow-up. And as I said, you're allowed to ask that the matter be agendized for a future meeting if you want to discuss it further. Okay, now let's talk about more modern problems. Can I just call into the meeting? Can I participate remotely? It used to be that the Brown Act contained teleconference provisions that were written during a time when a teleconference meant a very specific thing. It meant that someone was calling into the meeting from another public room. So, say you're the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors. You manage a jurisdiction that is hundreds of miles wide. You are elected by a district. You work at your district office. And there's a meeting of the Board of Supervisors. You can participate in the meeting by calling in from your district office, but the assumption was always that the public would be able to access the public official at the remote location. So the rules required that the agenda specify all of the physical locations from which the people were going to participate and that the public would be allowed to go to all of the remote locations or any of the remote locations they chose in order to give their public comment at that remote location. So if you're a member of your Board of Supervisors was participating from a public conference room at the far eastern end of San Bernardino County, you could go to that office and give your public comment there, and everybody back in the main board chambers would hear what you had to say. And so the rules were all written with that understanding. But in order for anything to be a legal meeting, all of those provisions had to be followed, including that the votes be held by roll call, that the agenda be posted 72 hours in advance at every remote location. Both or all of the locations had to be accessible to the public. And in general, what we found was that most of the questions that we got were, "How can I call into the meeting from my car on the way to town?" And the answer was, you can't paste an agenda on the passenger-side window on I-80 and say that you are inviting the public to address you. It's not practical to do. And so before COVID, you see where I'm headed with this, before COVID, we found that people very rarely availed themselves of the teleconference procedures in Samatow County for any of our jurisdictions because our geography just didn't really justify ever doing it that way. Well along came COVID. And not only was it unwise to gather physically together in the same room, but in many cases, it just was impossible to do so under the shelter-in-place rules. So the governor suspended these provisions of the Brown Act that had these onerous additional requirements for teleconferences and allowed teleconferences to happen without posting at the remote locations, and of course, without necessarily inviting people into the remote locations. And so we invented this idea of calling into the meeting from your own home. And that became the new normal for two and a half, almost three years. So you didn't have to provide a single room for the public to gather. You didn't have to require that the remote teleconference locations be accessible. And you could utilize entirely online meetings, entirely online platforms that had to meet certain parameters that were set forth by the executive orders. I'm going to skip some stuff that happened in the later stages of the COVID emergency and fast-forward to the state of the law today. So the legislature, after the sunsetting of the emergency declaration by the governor, was expected to do something that would... The name of the bill, which allows individual members to continue to participate remotely, but placed enormous strictures on their ability to do so. One of the strictures is that you had to have one of the specified rounds. It had to be either just cause or emergency circumstances. And the definitions of those things are not flexible, and they aren't what you think they are. Just cause has to be one of four specific things. And they may apply in an individual circumstance, but it doesn't mean that you think the cause is just, and that's why it's a good reason for you to call in. Emergency circumstances is basically limited to medical emergencies affecting you or a family member. So even emergency circumstances like a powerful storm that washed out the road, not a basis for a remote teleconference under AD2449. In addition, and this is something we're coming up against now, the number of times that you're allowed to participate remotely is limited based on the number of meetings you have per year. And so for the North Fair Oaks Community Council, the most number of times you could ever call in would probably be about three, maybe four. And what we found was, most people who had a reason to remotely participate had the same reason for every meeting. It wasn't something that came up uniquely for that meeting. They might not have. They might have, for example, a, uh, an elderly parent for whom they were a caregiver. And that was going to keep happening. It was going to continue to be a reason why they felt they needed to call in. In addition, the rules require that you can't have an entirely online meeting. You have to have a quorum in the room and then less than a majority could call in and rely upon this. But that would mean essentially that the rest of you could never call in if you had a member that repeatedly needed to. Um, because you'd have to have a quorum in the room. And that, in this case, would be five people would always have to be here in order to allow a sixth to call in, even the limited number of times that it was allowed. Um, and then, and this is not so much a problem for you. You have to continue to allow, in order to avail yourself of these rules, you have to provide for a public ability to participate in the meeting remotely. So the public can always participate remotely and then you have a limitation on the number of times that you can. The net effect of this rule is that fully online or even hybrid meetings where some people are in the room and others are participating remotely are now a thing of the past. They were a thing during COVID, um, and they have gone away for now. The legislature is still supposedly working on a number of bills that might allow agencies, particularly advisory councils, that make decisions that advise other decision-makers to expand their participation by the public and allow more people to volunteer to perform this work. But those bills encounter opposition in Sacramento. Um, there are reasons for that, but it is a source of frustration. And all I can say is, the county's legislative advocacy program is entirely supportive of having our legislative delegation make the changes to the law that maximize your flexibility and would return to a situation where you'd be allowed to participate remotely, um, when appropriate. Now, let's talk about a special problem, getting toward the end. Um, uh, let's talk about a special problem created by social media. You saw that I said that the definition of a meeting under the Brown Act includes the use of technological devices to develop a collective concurrence, to talk to each other. You can't have a teleconference unless you're complying with the Brown Act. You can't have an all-hands email unless you're complying with the Brown Act. And you can't. There was always a question about what to do about social media, because the law was written in nineteen fifty-three. It had been amended several times, but it had never been amended to expressly address what happens if the council proceeds to have a discussion on Nextdoor in a commentary? What happens if you're Facebook friends with each other? What happens if you retweet each other's tweets or whatever we're calling them? What are you to do when you're engaging with each other online? And there was a way of looking at the law that said that that was just forbidden for you to talk to each other online, because a majority of you might wind up seeing the post. A majority of you might wind up responding. And that would be a non-public discussion. Okay, it feels like it's a more public discussion than maybe the one that we're having right now, because you're doing it online and that's pretty visible depending upon the platform. But it's not really. In the eyes of the legislature, that's not really a public participation. Not everybody is on Facebook, not everybody is on Twitter. Several of these social media platforms have privacy settings that would allow you to discuss things amongst yourself without anybody seeing. So the legislature didn't really know what to do with it. They decided, uh, three years ago now to pass AB nine nine two, which did this. It said that you are allowed to post your thoughts, your policy positions, your approach to public issues on any open and accessible public platform. And it included some parameters about what it considered to be an open and accessible platform. Um, it basically includes the major social media platforms that, that most people are using now. However, the law went further and said, but the members cannot discuss among themselves the posting. And it proceeded to define discussing among themselves, commenting, sharing, retweeting, or even liking or disliking other members' posts. Even a single one of you liking another person's social media posts, if that other person is a member of the North Fair Oaks Council, is a violation of the Brown Act. You're not allowed to retweet each other, you're not allowed to like each other's posts, you're not allowed to comment on each other's posts. You can read them, but you can't engage with them. You can create your own posts, but you can't turn that new post into a dial. Because then it's a non-public discussion. There also, uh, has been rather fascinating line of cases about what to do with social media platforms and your engagement with the public. The, uh, the federal courts at least have started to say, if you're going to have an official profile on a social media platform where the public can engage with you on matters of policy, you might be facing some limits about what you do to curate the conversation with you. So this involves some school board members in the Central Valley, where there were some parents in the community that were very upset with these school board members. And they proceeded to be nuisance posters on their Twitter feeds and engaging in some, um, troll-like behavior with these elected officials. And these elected officials deleted their comments and then blocked them from their profiles. And the federal court said, you can't do that. If you are using your social media profile as a public, uh, engagement platform, and you don't have to, there's no requirement that you do this. But if you are using your social media platform and making it available to members of the public, if you are using it to publicize things in the North Fair Oaks community and you are speaking in your capacity as a member of the North Fair Oaks Community Council, you may be somewhat constrained in your ability to delete comments made by members of the public on that profile. And that may seem a little counterintuitive, um, but it is the current state of the law. If you're facing this problem, feel free to give me a call. I will, uh, talk you through. So, um, final slide, what do you do if there's a violation of the Brown Act? Generally speaking, most problems under the Brown Act are problems that can be fixed. So we fix them in advance if we know that they are about to happen. We cure them and fix them if they've already happened. In general, a member of the public that feels like they weren't given the opportunity to make a public comment or be heard in a meeting, there's a way to fix that problem and we can advise you about how to do that. There are, however, more serious kinds of violations where you're intentionally meeting behind closed doors, doing all the things that were forbidden back in nineteen fifty-two. There is a provision, and, and if members of the public point this out to you, it is technically correct, that serious violations involving an intentional effort to deprive the public of information to which they have a right, is technically crime. And while we have not seen criminal prosecutions in this county for violating the Brown Act, we have seen the DA write letters saying, I have found that this violates the Brown Act and don't ever do it again. And it is our aspiration to make sure that you never receive any of those letters. Okay, as I said, I'm available to you to answer questions as they come up. But if you have questions based on what you've heard tonight, I'm very happy to answer them now.
Kathleen, go ahead.
When we, when, at the end of the meeting, when we do council report out, what is that? And, yeah, what does that mean? What am I reporting on?
It is provided by the Brown Act that among the things that you're allowed to do in a Brown Act meeting without having to give a detailed agenda posting is for each member of a board or council to make a brief report of their own activities. A brief report of their own activities. And I would encourage you, if you want to, uh, watch the Board of Supervisors when they reach this part of their agenda, everybody has their own style, but in general, you'd say things like, I attended this community festival and it was great. I met with the, our congressional delegation and talked with them about their legislative priorities. I did this, I did that. It sounds like bragging, but it's actually not. It's actually so that the other council members can hear what it is that the other council members are doing. And that might potentially inform things that you might want to do. So for example, if you heard that a council member was, um, uh, had attended a, a particular meeting and you didn't know that that group was, was meeting again, or something like that, you could begin to attend. So that's the purpose of that. It's not, um, it's not supposed to be an opportunity to make policy statements or statements about your plans necessarily. It's really more a report of your own activities.
So when is the best time to request an agenda item to be on the calendar?
Um, the best time to do that is as soon as you know you want it. Um, so that it can be placed on an agenda where there's room. Um, and generally, the more time in advance, the easier it is to accommodate.
But you say that publicly at what point of the meeting?
Well, you don't have to. It doesn't have to be in public. You could have a conversation privately with the chair and say, I wanted to have something added to the agenda. Can we talk about what it would look like?
Okay.
Because again, you're allowed to have conversations with a single member, even with two, three, as many, as many as three of your colleagues, you're allowed to have.
Is there a way, if you wanted to alert the entire council about something, let's say, an event, you could use an email to do that or no?
I would, I would recommend not using email to do that. I would actually recommend, if possible, to do that during the report of your own activities. Um, even, yeah, I mean, it may not fall technically within the statutory language, but if you said, I'm planning on attending the North Fair Oaks, uh, festival and I would encourage all of us to go.
So there isn't any way to alert everybody about one? Because I thought if you either, like the four, or you have to send the same email to everybody.
Well, sending the same email to everybody doesn't really solve the problem. The, potentially the best way to accomplish what you're talking about is to give it to staff and then staff can inform the entire public.
Got it, okay. Okay, that's, I knew there was some way around that, okay.
Blair, go ahead.
Um, the similar vein. Sometimes you have an idea, you want to float it, you're not sure if there's enough interest to even put it on the agenda. Um, I've seen people do like memorandum to council. Like one member of the city council will send it out and then that starts the discussion of, do we even want this on the agenda? You know, um, like Supervisor Slocum, did he do some sort of memo about that homeless? Um, criminalization thing? Or they did just pick up on the fact that it was already on the agenda? Because it made a lot of news and it got people talking. And so people in each supervisory district probably called into their, their district representative, said that I'm interested in this topic, what are you doing? And I think it's a positive thing to be able to float an idea without an agenda, not, maybe not starting a secret conversation, but just like a one-way memo. Uh, like, I, I think we should pass a resolution, uh, to the Board of Supervisors and the Library Board that we want. Um, a new branch library within five to ten years. Um, is there enough interest to put this on the agenda? Uh, these are the, this is my thinking. Here's some examples of new branch libraries, East Palo Alto, City Council just bought the one acre adjacent. You know, I, I, you could lay out some facts just to get the ball rolling. Is there a way that's legal?
Yeah, there are several ways that are illegal, but I'm not going to tell you what they are. The, the, the quibble that I have is to gauge if there's interest.
Yeah.
That's the, the part that's forbidden. You're not really supposed to ask your fellow members, does anybody else support this? You can meet with an individual member. So let's again focus on the number of people on the North Fair Oaks Council. If you wanted to know whether there was support, you'd be allowed to find out whether three of your colleagues supported what you were doing. You would not be allowed to ask the whole group, hey, all of you, tell me if this is.
Could I do a poll on Nextdoor and see if?
Nope.
No.
No.
One of them.
It's, it's. It's, I mean, you can, you can engage with the community. You can't engage with each other on an online platform. That's the rule of AB nine nine two.
So I could do a poll on Nextdoor, I just couldn't try to elect. It, it would be just, everyone in the community that happens to be on Nextdoor would respond.
And it would be my advice that none of the people on the council cast a vote on your poll.
What are the top five issues you care about? Parking, libraries, jobs, cost of living, add your own, and then.
Members of the public could respond to their heart's content, but it would again be my advice that no one on the council respond to your poll.
What if they did, though?
And you. They would be violating AB nine nine two.
And, okay. And then we'd get to see how the law works.
I, I've heard it's not a fun experience being, being on the defendant's stand in the court of law.
One of the things that I've done as chair over the last three years has been to set aside our March study session. I think you'll all recall, it's kind of a review of the prior year. And then also just going through brainstorming, lottery, lottery list, call it what you will, of things we're going to work on in the coming year. Now, that doesn't account for things that come up during the year. But it kind of gives me a sense of, okay, here's where the council is as far as agenda items are concerned. So when we have a month where it looks like this is an issue that might fit, the timing's good, there's room on the agenda, we build it in that way. So in a sense, it's a roadmap. It's not static and, you know, things change over the course of the year. But that's the tool I use to get feedback from the council and kind of guide the planning through that, through the year, and that's.
And, and to answer your question about how the Board of Supervisors does it, um, I, I can't speak specifically to the item that you're talking about, but in general, you'll frequently see board items sponsored by two supervisors. That's what they do. They work with each other because then they know they've got at least one vote. Now they only need to get one.
And you just did one person, the second to actually get a motion on the floor, so that's a good minimum.
Correct.
And if there aren't two people, what's the point of even talking about it? You're not going to get a second on the motion.
Exactly.
The chair, Emma Hatcher.
Go ahead, Emma, please.
Hi, thank you. You know, I, I, I would echo everything, of course, that, uh, Mr. Fox is talking about, but I, I strongly encourage you guys to utilize the county staff, our liaisons, um, our OCA staff. Information comes to us and then you'll notice when you, we send it back to you, it's through a B C so that you don't reply and put you at risk. So we do all those safeguards, so please utilize, if there's something, um, that needs to go out, then, you know, tap into us, send us the email. If there's an agenda item of interest, send it to us. We will elevate it up and we will bring it up and see, um, where that could best fit. And if there's, you know, where, where, and work with Brooks on that as well. So again, that's our role there, um, and any way we can continue to support. And then we work through the district office as well, um, just to give them a heads up of what's happening and if there's anything that may be that they're working on. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not, um, competing against each other, but working in parallel and in support of each other.
Any other questions from, uh, council members? Um, your assessment, Tim, one to a hundred, the likelihood of, of legislation that allows us for remote meetings in the future? I suspect it's not very high. I just thought I'd ask and get your, your opinion.
I'm, I'm a hopeful person. Um, I, I think it makes so much sense. I have, I've been surprised at the buzzsaw that the bills have run into. There are definitely some forces in Sacramento that are very doctrinaire about the Brown Act. And, um, when they're thinking about the work of the public, they're thinking about the city council and the Board of Supervisors. And, you know, they're not as aware about the impact that these laws have had on citizen advisory committees where everybody's a volunteer. And, um, you know, making it more inconvenient for them to attend a meeting isn't really a plus factor for anyone at all. So I'm, I'm hopeful that if the legislation is crafted in such a way that assures those interests that it's not going to change the way that legislative bodies behave, uh, when they change the rules that we all operate under, that, um, that it can, it can be allowed.
We gotta, gotta get over the complaints of the, what would they be called, textualists or something like that? The law is the way it was written in eighteen fifty-three and that's what we have to.
A strict inspection.
And, you know, the, uh, there are still journalistic groups that just find it most convenient to require strict compliance with the Brown Act and, um, they have lobbyists in Sacramento, so.
There are no other questions? All right, thank you so much.
You know, wait, one more question, uh, through the chair.
Go ahead.
If there is, and back, and, and, uh, Tim, you're there still. Um, if there is an interest of a survey to go out, I would encourage you to have it, that it, Tim, can it go out on, on one person on behalf of the council? Or does it need to be a, uh, recommendation, go through a public comment? I'm, I'm hearing survey and I'm hearing, let me go down to Nextdoor, so I'm getting a little, I just want to make sure that we kind of.
AB nine nine two only constrains the behavior of people on Brown Act bodies, not the county or staff. So if there were an interest by the council to do a survey, it would be beneficial for the county to initiate the survey, because then the council members themselves could all vote if they wanted to. Uh, it would only be a problem if council members engaged with each other on social media platforms by liking, disliking, retweeting, voting yes, replying, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you very much, Tim. Uh, agenda item number five, let's move on to report outs. I believe we have a report tonight from the county executive and supervisor's office. Tony, would you like to introduce? Connie, would you like to introduce yourself and do a report at least?
Hello, everyone. I am Connie Franco. I am representing a district member. I am Supervisor Slocum's liaison. I am here to just give some informed updates on some of the things that were discussed in the Board of, um, the, the, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little nervous. The, uh, the meeting that was took, took, took place, um, on Tuesday. So we have the Hopeful Horizon Initiative that was passed, which is empowering lives. Um, here in Somato County, we have this goal of reaching and maintaining function, functional zero homelessness, meaning that every unsheltered homeless person in our county who chooses, assistance will be provided interim or permanent housing. At the board's meeting on January 23rd, they unanimously approved an ordinance called Hopeful Horizons Empowering Lives Initiative. This ordinance is about hope, dignity, and the chance to empower and improve the lives of those on the streets. It will regulate encampments on public property in the unincorporated areas, and will reflect the county's commitment to ensuring homelessness is brief and rare. We want to encourage our neighbors experiencing homelessness to accept our afterage shelter and support. Our process under this new ordinance would be of the following. For foreign forcing ordinance to close an encampment, the county must issue at least two written warnings in the language of those residing in the encampment and an offer of placement in a specific shelter. For those individuals who accept the offer of housing and the services that will also come with the offer, the county will also offer assistance in removal and storage of their personal property, holding it for 90 days, um, at no cost to, um, the individual. For those individuals who do not comply with two warnings, it would be a misdemeanor violation and the individual shall be entitled to participate in a diversion program offered by the Somato County Superior Court. The next report that I have is, um, uh, applications are now being accepted for the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission on the Sheriff's Office. At the December 12th Board of Supervisors meeting, they unanimously approved the cert, the creation of the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission on the Sheriff's Office. Uh, we're happy to report that the applications are now being accepted, uh, for the new commission and the deadline would be Friday, February 23rd to apply. The commission will be, will consist of seven members plus two alternatives, alternates, I'm sorry. Five will be nominated by the county supervisors from their respective districts, one from the sheriffs, and one at large member and two at large alternates by the board liaisons. Selected members of the sheriff's care program and the youth commission will serve as non-voting members. All nominations must be approved by the full Board of Supervisors. We want to remind SMDO County residents that they're, and encourage them to apply. So please give the word out. Um, um, we also want them to know that regard, that they should apply regardless of their citizen status. Um, and everyone should apply in order to receive, to serve on the commission, even if nominated by supervisor for their district. Um, and then we have, uh, the website, uh, where you can find application on, um, sncgov.org/BNC. Um, and the last, uh, comments that I have is just to let the committee know that, um, the District Four is aware of the, um, the, uh, commercial parking in residential areas happening in North Fair Oaks and we're working with Public Works and, uh, the court enforcement to, um, uh, track that down and get that situated. We are also working and are unformed of the outside food vendors that are seated in the, within the Middlefield Road, um, area, and we're also working with code enforcement to get that situated as well. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much, Connie, and welcome to the, welcome to the team.
Welcome.
Uh, council member report ads, Blair, please, if you have something.
Um, next Tuesday at 6:00 PM in the Menlo Park City Council Chambers, there is a candidate debate or forum for the candidates for District Four Supervisor, which is our district. Um, it's sponsored by this Thrive Alliance, which I think is like some nonprofit empowerment training thing. It's kind of a good group. I posted it after, I got, uh, information about it and I posted it on Nextdoor. You could just show up or you could, uh, register if you want. The only advantage of registering is you can submit questions that could potentially be asked of the candidates. Um, and we have a primary kind of early this year, March, like the first Tuesday, which I think is like five weeks away. So, uh, there's five candidates and the top two are going to go to a runoff unless someone gets 50.01%. But it's highly unlikely with five candidates. Um, but it's an opportunity to kind of shape the future of the district is to, you know, see these people, talk to them, see how they respond to constituent questions. Um, because they're, they may serve 12 years. There's, that's the term limits here. So four, three, four-year terms. And there's quite a mix. Um, so I encourage everyone to attend that's available. I think there's a link or something where if you can't be there in person, you could watch remotely, but you may not be able to participate. Um, and I think there's a later candidate thing somewhere in Redwood City on Woodside Road. I'll stick it on Nextdoor if I happen to see it. Um, I just want to encourage people to be involved in the process. Um, and I really love the fix-it clinic that I did because I actually fixed something that I didn't think I could fix. Um, so three cheers for the library system for hosting that. And, uh, that's all I have for my report this week.
Thank you. Juan Carlos?
Uh, no, I was just going to announce the same, uh, public meeting. So.
Okay. Um, Niket?
Um, nothing major, just same question as usual. Give, when can we get a report on the tree plan, environmental plan? Um, I know, I think it's almost a year and a half overdue, so love to get some more.
I believe, I don't know, Emma, if you've got insight onto that, but I believe we're going to get an update on the tree ordinance, um, at our next meeting. Is that correct? Is that ready to go?
It would, it will be very soon. Yeah. Um, we recently had a change within our, Lisa, our deputy director, um, retired. And so we're just bringing on board the, 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 the new staff. And so I think we're, we're hoping that they could be available by February. Yes.
Okay, that would be, um, Kathleen?
Just reiterating what, um, Juan Carlos and Blair said, but I will also believe there is a candidate forum on Saturday in Woodside, correct?
Okay.
Um, by Mark Simon, who writes for the Daily Journal. And the only thing I'd want to add is, Rick Lord, it's super important to make sure that North Fair Oaks has a voice in that campaign. So I'd encourage everyone to pay attention.
He actually wrote a nice little shout out about North Fair Oaks and its importance in the race not, not too long ago.
He called it the de facto mayor of North Fair Oaks, the next supervisor. I thought that was cute, but it covers East Palo Alto, Redwood City, North Fair Oaks, and East Palo Alto on the side of the freeway.
Anything else, Kathleen?
I know. Thank you.
Kelly, anything, uh, tonight for the good of the order?
I have two questions that mostly, Tim, for you. Um, one is, um, related to this candidate forum meeting. What are the rules on, should the county, because to me, that is something hugely important for the residents of North Fair Oaks. I don't know what our rules are on like as a, uh, is the county publicizing this? Like what are the communication efforts around it? Because it seems like that's something we would love to get more people aware of. I just found out here for this meeting. Um, and my second question is the authority of this council. Um, which is, you know, you mentioned a lot in your presentation around boards and influence and voting and it's, I've read the bylaws and we have sort of a nebulous advisory role. So anyways, those are my two questions that I, and the reason, one just came from this meeting, but the other is I'm involved in some work on some road work on my street in North Fair Oaks. And people have asked me, what is the authority of this council? And I'm still very new. So anyway, those are my two questions.
Okay. Those are big questions. The answer to the first one is that the county will sometimes host candidate forums. Um, also will sometimes do the groundwork of, um, uh, informing the public about the process of becoming a candidate. Um, but in general, campaigning is something the county does not play a role in. It does not facilitate or advise or assist. Um, so for this council to be involved, it could work with the appropriate county personnel to provide a place for the candidates to gather and to meet with the public. But, um, doing things like endorsing candidates, that's not something this council, uh, is asked to do or is empowered to do. Um, because, uh, county agencies aren't supposed to engage in political activities. So campaign activities are not allowed, but sort of facilitating, uh, public informational events, um, is allowed. With regard to the second question, the Board of Supervisors has established several municipal advisory committees, including the North Fair Oaks Community Council, for the purpose of advising it about all policy matters that affect the people and residents of North Fair Oaks. So that's a very broad mandate. Um, anything that might relate to the quality of life of the people of North Fair Oaks, this council is empowered to discuss, invite the public to advise on, and then take action to advise the board. Um, however, the actual decision-making could be the Board of Supervisors. It could be the Director of Public Works. It could be the Director of Planning and Building. Various county functions are performed by individual county elected officials, uh, or even department heads. And it will kind of depend on the subject matter of what we're talking about. But in general, the idea of the board in establishing this council, uh, many years ago, was to ensure that the people of North Fair Oaks had an opportunity to let their voice be heard, at the time, in a more convenient way by coming to this room and asking the council to speak to the Board of Supervisors about those concerns, rather than have a direct line of communication with the board. They could avail themselves of that if they wanted to, but that, the idea was to hold meetings in North Fair Oaks so that the public could be more actively engaged. And that still continues to be the idea. Um, so all of the municipal advisory councils are asked to make statements on behalf of the community that they represent to the Board of Supervisors so that the board is properly informed about what the community says it wants.
So a quick follow-up on that. So the, that's the part I guess I'm missing, that step on, where is it that our deliberations, discussions or decision gets to the Board of Supervisors or how does that part happen?
Okay. Um, it varies depending upon what the action is. So for example, if the planning department has an agenda item that's brought to the North Fair Oaks Council, um, and the council deliberates and recommends approval of the project with additional conditions or denial of the project. Generally, the planner that works on that particular project will include that information in the next decision-maker's action. So they'll say, the matter was brought to the North Fair Oaks Community Council on such and such night. There were, you know, public speakers and the council voted to recommend denial. So they'll say that. Um, with regard to other matters, more general policy matters of the board, it really kind of depends on whether or not it's something that's a county manager's initiative, I'm sorry, county executives initiative or another department. If, um, uh, Public Works is giving an update on the Middlefield Road project and someone says, you know, it'd be really great if you use this method of communicating with the public about road closures or something. That's not going to go to the Board of Supervisors. That's going to go to Public Works.
So if, for example, the homeless initiative project that was discussed on Tuesday, is that something that we could theoretically discuss to say, how is this going to affect the North Fair Oaks region? And here are recommendations to the board? Or is that basically now it's closed? They're not willing to take any information or input from us? Or is it, is all of our input have to be solicited? Or can we provide information that they may not be aware of or contrary to a decision that they've been made already?
The establishing resolution for the North Fair Oaks Community Council does not say that the council only advises on matters where it's asked. So if the council wanted to have a discussion and then communicate its position to the supervisor for the district or, or some other decision-maker, um, you're free to do so.
Through the chair, Emma, answer.
Uh, Emma, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Um, and Tim, can you maybe describe a little bit more about the, as we were talking about the election, thank you Kathleen for bringing that up and the support. And then more specifically about the role of NFOCC members, endorsements, et cetera. Um, and hope, you know, whether they're hosting or an event or an endorsement, what is that? What are there restrictions or anything there?
Okay. Um, members of the North Fair Oaks Community Council do not give up any of their rights to engage in political activity by virtue of serving on the council. So if you wish to, uh, advocate for a particular candidate, go to a campaign event, urge people to turn out and vote. You are free to do so in your individual capacity. There is a tradition for various, you know, good reasons that if you ever find yourself being asked for an endorsement as an individual, that you make clear that you're not speaking on behalf of the North Fair Oaks Community Council in what you do. Um, so if you read people's campaign materials and their list of endorsements, very often will be a disclaimer at the bottom that says titles are for identification purposes only. So the mayor of Redwood City is not going to endorse somebody as the mayor. There's going to be a statement of, of the mayor is endorsing this candidate. And this is just to clarify that that's the person that we're talking about. Um, so it's very important that people not use county time or resources to advocate for particular outcomes in contested elections. So when I say hosting a candidate forum or something like that, you would work with staff to make sure that whatever it is that's being done follows all of those rules. But what you do in your private political life, if you do it in your private political life, is entirely up to you.
Through the chair, I would advise, um, that those, uh, that we have a few of our council members maybe want to check in with Tim uh, at another date, uh, just about that language that's currently being publicized about endorsements.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, anything else, Kelly, I believe was your.
No, thanks, Eric.
Okay. Um, other things I had, yes, the candidate forum, I don't have the address, but it is Saturday, 2 o'clock in Woodside.
Woodside Church, I think.
Pardon me?
Woodside Church.
Woodside Church. Um, okay. Uh, I just wanted to give a brief shout out to anybody in the room online who participated in the point in time count of the homeless this morning. I don't know if anybody from the county did that, but it means getting up very early in the morning and spending the morning out. Identifying, counting our unhoused. It's a terrific effort. Um, and again, it's a, it's a very early day. So thanks to anyone online who did that today. Um, speaking of elections, actually, our February council meeting will be having our election for chair and vice chair for the coming year. And I wanted to advise the rest of the council that I do not intend to run for chair. I've been, I've had this position for three years now. I think a little fresh leadership is in order. And we have any number of very qualified people in this room tonight who could assume that leadership role. If you're interested in the position and have any questions about it, please feel free to reach out to me. I don't believe that's a Brown Act violation. So I'm in good shape with Tim there. Um, and I can just talk to you about how the job is, uh, how the job is done and that sort of thing. But I wanted to let everyone know in advance of the, uh, of the meeting next month. Um, with that, thank you to our presenters tonight. Thank you very much, Carmen, members of the public who attended this evening. And as always, thanks to county staff, Emma and Connie, Lizette, Bo and Tim for their support. Our next meeting is a regular session, February 22nd. And with that, we're adjourned. Very much, everyone.
Thank you.